Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the East Line Board of Selectmen, the meeting of April 2nd. I welcome you all and ask if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) Thank you. I don't believe we have any additional agenda.
There are none.
Calendar items, delegations, anybody from the board? Anybody from the audience like to speak to the board at public delegations? Sir?
Good evening, members of the board, and everyone here. My name is David LoPriore. I'm the director and founder of the Community Acupuncture for Veterans Program, which is a nonprofit pending organization that has started giving free and very low-cost acupuncture treatments, community-style acupuncture treatments, to U.S. military veterans. We're doing this at the community center in the Olive Shandali Room. I'll give you a flyer.
(inaudible) Thank you. (inaudible) (inaudible)
I noticed on the agenda that we're listed as the second new business item, and on here it says insurance waiver request, which is not what we're here for. We're actually here to request a fee waiver for the room itself. It's a $50 fee to rent the room, and that $50 will really help to subsidize the treatments for the veterans. So, we are a nonprofit pending organization. A friend of mine, who's an attorney, has donated $3,000 of his legal services to take us completely through the nonprofit status process, so there's no reason to expect that we won't be nonprofit sometime relatively soon, whenever that might be. And if there's any question about liability, I have listed the town of East Line as an additional insured on my professional liability insurance as an acupuncturist, and I have a document here to show you that, if that's necessary. This program's been fantastic for people already. I can relate just a real short story of one Korean War veteran who I treated a week ago Monday, who came in and hasn't slept right since he was in combat in Korea. About two years ago, a doctor put him on a CPAP machine, and he said he slept even worse since then, in those two years. He had a lot of pain in his neck, his back, sciatica, and he was very skeptical. We didn't charge him anything when he came in, which is our policy. We are collecting funds. We've raised, I think, well over $3,000 now in charitable contributions, including, actually, it's probably more like $4,000, including a benefit dinner that was held at the Oyster Club Restaurant, which we raised $2,100 at. So, all this money is going to subsidize the treatments of the veterans, so we can make them as inexpensive as possible and free for anyone that needs that. So, he got a free treatment, and he was so impressed, even though he was very skeptical and a bit grumpy when he came in, and he was so impressed that he called my office the next day and said he had the best night's sleep in 20 years last night after the treatment, and all his pain was gone. So, these are the kind of benefits people are getting, and, you know, we'd love to have the town support the process by waiving that fee, that $50 that you'll waive for us. If you do, we'll go directly to subsidizing treatments for veterans.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the board under public delegations?
My name is David Ogil. I live at 19 Park Court in the Black Point section of the town, and I'd like to talk to you for a few minutes about a request for authorization by the East Line Transit Authority for the use of golf carts in the Black Point Beach area. I'm here on behalf of Robert Shea, who is also a resident of Black Point, who couldn't be with us tonight and hoped to be able to meet with you himself. He's in California, where in the next few days he'll be officiating over the marriage of his son, his youngest son, so I think, much as he wanted to be here, I'm sure you can appreciate that he did have a somewhat higher calling this evening. I would briefly summarize the remarks that Mr. Shea intended to deliver and would emphasize that I am in full concurrence with all of them. The request we are making is only for authorization for the use of golf carts within Black Point. We neither endorse nor oppose any other of the town beaches from seeking the authorization from the Transit Authority that we are seeking for our association. As I think you probably know, Black Point is a singular entity. It's indicated in our charter, which was granted 83 years ago by the state of Connecticut back in 1931. The Black Point Charter very specifically delineates the boundaries of our association, and it is specifically and only within the confines of those boundaries that we seek permission for the use of golf carts in accordance with the provisions of Section 14-300G of the Connecticut General Statutes. The council, I believe, has previously received a letter dated March 17th, 2014, from Thomas Kelly, who is the chairman of the Board of Governors of the Black Point Beach Association, in which he indicated that there was unanimous agreement among all of members of the Board of Governors that they had absolutely no opposition among them in any way to the use of golf carts in the Black Point area. One of the members of our Board of Governors is here this evening, Jim Moffitt. Section 14-300G of the General Statutes lists certain specific regulations and restrictions for use of golf carts once they are authorized, which they must be, for use by the local transit authority, and we would intend to fully follow and abide by each and all of these restrictions. As I believe you know from previous testimony, there may be some golf carts that are already in use in this town, in various parts of the town, that have not involved, that have not been involved in requests from the Transit Authority, and so they may or may not be in compliance with the regulations and requirements of Section 14-300G. Approval of the request that we are making would assure there would be full compliance on a de facto basis of the use of all golf carts within the town, and would only enhance the safety and security of the users of those carts and of the individuals who reside in the areas where those carts are in use. So, we would sincerely request and urge your approval for the authorization for our residents to have the option of more easily accessing our beaches, our tennis courts, our bocce courts, our Black Point market, and their friends and relatives who reside within the confines of Black Point and the Black Point Beach Association. So, we urge your approval of our request and hope that you can act favorably and expeditiously on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak under public delegations? Ms. Chair?
You almost got away without having to hear either Bob or I tonight. He was marrying a son, and I had a son whose wife was having a baby, but baby came early, so you're gonna listen to me one more time, 'cause I'm back.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What kind of baby?
What kind of baby? Male. Oh, gee, female. Oh, I can't believe I said that.
Female?
My fifth granddaughter.
All right, very good. Congratulations.
And she's beautiful. All right, listen, Bob and I both want to apologize a little bit and say, you know, we're really sorry this is dragging on. That's not what we tried to do. We came in hoping to make this short and sweet, and for a variety of reasons, it hasn't worked out that way. We were kind of hoping that action would be taken tonight, because all but one of you have discussed this in depth before, and we didn't see the need to, you know, push that ball around any longer. But, we're still here, so I'm coming back with some last-minute comments, some similar to what I said before, but hopefully very brief. I'm gonna give you the thoughts and reactions that we have had, that are responses to what objections we have heard anyone here raise or ask about the possibility. The first one was the issue of liability. We'd like to argue that we're only talking about Black Point streets, and we don't see any distinct liability on those streets. We also would argue that the town often takes liability in situations such as same-routine playground for little children, public beaches, athletic fields, Christmas parade, et cetera. And, you know, golf carts actually all have to be insured. There are many ways where you can play around that liability, argue that that liability is even a little less. Another argument we heard people voice was that there was an unfairness here, because we're asking for one beach, and other beaches might want it. We actually tried to think outside that box very distinctly. We're asking for our beach and hoping that the ordinance would be crafted in a way that any beach who wanted to come forward, hopefully in only one meeting or is quickly done, could say, "We'd like to add on to that," and every beach could be evaluated on its own merits. So, we don't see that as unfair at all. As Dave said to you, we're not for or against other beaches having it, we just would like to argue for ours. And we also would argue that it's kind of unfair, based on your four-years-ago vote, to cut it off for all of us, because, at least so the discussion in minutes led us to believe there was great concern about one beach. Well, it wasn't about all the others, but all the others lost out because of one. One other question was, one other thing that came up was maybe this would be too time-consuming for the town as an issue, and, is Joe Burgaw here? Oh, good. 'Cause I was thinking that maybe there would be some value in, you could just assign a staff person, Joe Burgaw, for instance, to hear a request from other beaches as they come in, evaluate it, put it all together, put it in a report, and just bring it to you, so that it was quick and dirty as other people added on, or it could be Sergeant Blanchett also. Another question that came up was the one of cost, whether it was gonna cost the town any amount of money. I'm not sure I clearly see how that would happen, but my refute to that would be, you know, if you registered 25 carts at $25 each, that's $750, that's certainly gonna pay for the stickers, the runoff of the instructions that you have to hand out, and I don't know what legals cost. If they're short enough, I know they don't cost $1 million, but if they do, then maybe you should make it a requirement of each beach that if their request is to go forward, they should agree to pay for the legals, since that seemed to be something that was on everybody's mind. Bob and I would be more than willing to raise the money from Black Point for Black Point this time. The last one was the issue of enforcement, and in our mind, there is no added enforcement necessary here at all. When you put cars on the road, you don't send policemen out to check every car that goes by to see that it's right. You deal with if something goes wrong. Nothing would change in that way at all. These are registered, and it's only if, you know, someone complains or someone does not follow the rules that more enforcement is necessary. We have motorized bikes all over our roads, and they pose much more of a potential problem in terms of enforcement, et cetera, but they don't add to the force. So, and lastly, the one of, you can't do it for one if you don't do it for all. I, I'm not, I just don't see that clearly. Our beaches are distinctly different areas, and also, if you were gonna implement them one at a time, I was trying to think of things that have happened in town, I'm sure there are other examples, but the one I could come up with was sewers. I remember arguing adamantly that I had to be in the first beach that got sewers, 'cause I had septic problems all the time. But, a lot of beaches didn't get sewers for a long time, even though they had issues too, but there were financial reasons and construction reasons. It was implemented slowly as each beach was ready. So, you didn't say, "The whole town's gonna have sewers by next year at this time," because that wasn't practical. I would argue that's kind of how you think things out. And how about sports teams? We have some sports teams that have really high-end fields and areas, and others, not so much, depending on, you know, how much they lobby you or who gets it first or second. So, that isn't really an argument that fits in all circumstances either. All right, so now you've heard me twice for the same thing. I promise you're never gonna hear me again, but in conclusion to this, if there are any other concerns that people have that we've not yet heard verbalized, 'cause these are the only ones anyone has get verbalized for me, we would request that you tell us, and we'll try to think through and help you find solutions for those also. You know, in 2014, there are golf carts everywhere nowadays, and actually, we're kind of at a loss as to why you can't approve this. Many people in our neighborhood need it. It's not a matter of, "Won't that be fun?" They need it, so we'd appreciate if you think it in those terms. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Anyone else like to speak under public delegations? Rocky, you were next.
Good evening, Dr. O'Connor, at 23 Roxbury Court. I'm the chairman of the Town Building Committee, and the town charter states that the Board of Selectmen have to authorize the building committee to administer a project, and there's one project that's in abeyance right now. It's the boardwalk restoration. The bids came in on the 21st of February, and they were to be held for 90 days, and there's a big exposure as far as the price of steel, if we go over those 90 days. If the steel goes up, we'd have to bear that cost. There's also the date of completion. Concrete sidewalks need to be poured, and if this runs into the winter, they'll have to be put off to the spring, and chances are that all the work that has been done will get washed out before the concrete's poured. So, if you intend to authorize the Town Building Committee, I would appreciate you doing it soon. If not, have fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor. Anyone else like to speak under public delegations? Mr. Mingo?
I just briefly wanna speak in support of Kimberly Barbara Bradley as an alternate, Kimberly Barbara Bradley as an alternate to the Wetlands Commission.
What is your address? I forget the number on Boston Coast Road. Karen?
Oh, I'm sorry, 397.
That's right.
This young lady has an awful, very impressive resume. I don't know if you folks have it, but she's a brilliant lady, and she's actually performed some work for the Wetland Agency, and I urge you to support her appointment as an alternate to the Wetlands Commission. The second issue I have is the town website. I would urge the board to see if we can hire some help to get that thing straightened out, because I ran into a problem over the weekend with something that happened, and trying to get to the, find out who sits on what committee is very, very difficult. Nobody's around on the weekend, so I would urge you to see if we can get the lady downstairs some help, so we can get that thing back up and running again. The one other issue that, which is not on the agenda, but this golf cart thing, I'd like to see us look into the hiring or having some vendor come in that has electric cars for the boardwalk, that they would lease them, for people like myself who are meant, you know, are physically challenged to walk that mile and a half boardwalk. And I know, if, since you go to Eastern States Exhibition, there's a company there that'll rent you an electric car, and just as a, you know, a trial to see if we can find a vendor that's willing to sit out there on the weekends and lease these cars, so people who are physically challenged can get in a little electric car and enjoy, you know, their walk. It's just a thought. Trial and see what happens. And the other issue is, and I understand what the problem is, but agendas for the Selectmen meeting haven't been coming in the mail, and I know the reason why, but somehow can we address that, so we get an agenda in the mail?
Absolutely. I'll make sure that you get that.
And I understand what the problem is, but, thank you.
Mr. Waterman?
Good evening. Richard Waterman, the Lethen Lake Avenue Extension, Nyadik. Tonight, I'm here representing the East Line Puppetry Project, and we're requesting a waiver for insurance for use of the community center. We're gonna have three programs this year, plus a lecture, and if you were willing to grant us a waiver for the first program, the only one which we'll have on town property, it would be very much appreciated. Briefly, we started off last year just as a puppet show. We had three shows, and then we sort of morphed into this East Line Puppetry Project, which has grown to be more than we had really expected, in that we now have bylaws, we're incorporated into this, in the state as a nonprofit, but we still don't have our final one C3 yet, which is a long-term activity. And, so, briefly, the shows that we have this summer are the Shadow Puppets Around the World, and then we have one called Animan, and another one called Jack Tuesday Fairy Tale Investigator. All of these shows are family-oriented and well-received by the public, and in the past, we've gotten quite a bit of support from businesses in the community and individuals, and we hope that we'll be able to continue to do this. And another aspect of our puppetry project is educational, and we have several purposes as an organization, and among them is to promote cultural literacy and academic achievement in children and their families through the art of puppetry, and to develop student workshops in puppetry that will emphasize script writing, set design, sound lighting, making puppets, stages, and production of the puppet show. Also, as part of our purposes, is a continuation of puppet shows, and we will need a little bit of help in the very beginning, and that's why we're asking for a waiver. All right, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else like to speak under public delegations? Is that you, Barbara?
Yep. Barbara Johnston, 35 Seacrest Avenue in Black Point, and I basically can't believe where the years have gone. This started out in 2010, and here we are in 2014. So, I won't have really much to say, but I will read some reading material for you to take home, okay? And hopefully, it will, you will call an informational session, especially a public informational session, where we can all adversely or favorably talk about this golf cart issue for the whole town and not just for Black Point. That's where we ended up before with the two state highways that we have, and you could not cross the state highway with a golf cart. I don't know if any new ordinance has changed since 2010, but anyways, that was one of the big problems. The other problem is, I deeply resent them saying, "Just for Black Point." I am a physically handicapped person, too, and other than bringing in my sticker, and I know you believe that, it's in the car, because I didn't want to ticket, okay? But, basically, there are only two handicap places in Black Point for the beach. There is one outside the clubhouse, which I fought to get to, but the clubhouse is not anywhere near the beach. So, basically, please take that into consideration. There is no room for cars or golf carts or anything, so when you denied it in 2010, I have to agree with you, because there is no room in Black Point for golf carts. Never mind the roads that are supposed to be sizable roads, they are not that in a lot of places. Right now, there's a real problem going on on East Shore Road with the buildings, so please, as a traffic authority, take that into effect, okay? That we are gonna have a nightmare, I believe, anyway, if so many elderly people especially get golf carts. The biggest part also was, according to the state statute, it was Connecticut driver's licenses. I don't know where a lot of these people, and there's five or 600 homes in Black Point come from, but it's gonna be interesting, if you stick just to Connecticut drivers or licenses, how are you gonna enforce that? And I will get into that now, but this is reading material for you, anyway. And the biggest part I have is, I had written a letter, an email, to our Board of Governors, asked them to please, Tom Kelly is our chairman of the Board of Governors, to put it on the agenda in August of 2013, to ask if we can talk about this golf cart issue. He clearly denied me even putting it on the agenda. I also know, 'cause I attend the Board of Governors' meetings, that they've never approved this, okay? They've never taken a vote of the residents that live there, and I am very active there. I definitely am, and I would like to read some of the things to you, 'cause we have a 20 mile an hour speed limit, not 25, but it's only 20. I don't know how fast you can get these golf carts going, but we have hills. And last year, there was an accident in front of the Black Point store, where a little girl was coming down on her scooter or her bike, and ran into a car on Sunrise because of the hill. She couldn't stop. The car happens to be going along Sunrise, and they collided. So, we have children there, too, that probably would be using a golf cart, and I think it's a real serious problem whether the liability is the town, whether it's Black Point, or whoever's driving this golf cart. It's a nightmare, the way I see it. But, I will read some of the things that the association manager, and it's Black Point's little information paper, and it says, "The association, through its association manager, shall cause the motor vehicle laws and regulations, including but not limited to speeding, stop signs, violations, and other moving traffic, to be strictly enforced." Well, we have a little golf cart riding around across my house all last summer, and I know who it is. He was a former Board of Governors chairman, but hey, what could I do? I said in August I would call the police every time he went by, but it's pretty hard to catch him as he's ripping along Seacrest Avenue. So, anyways, the big part is that Black Point has regulations, rules and regulations, and they're also supposed to be enforced by our association manager. They are not being enforced by him, because according to these papers that I'm giving you, it's up to the town of East Line to enforce it. So, do we have enough police officers, when the town increases to $30,000, 30,000 people, excuse me, to enforce these laws with all these little golf carts riding around on these narrow streets, and these properties that have no property to store these golf carts? 'Cause our lots are probably only 50 by 100, most of them are 40 by 100. It can be a real problem. But, anyways, his comment was that it's up to the East Line Police to enforce it, not up to the association. So, as far as I'm concerned, when you read these, you'll see that it's a public nightmare. But anyways, I also have another problem here, that some people are riding around them on Saunders Point, and that's never been enforced. Now, again, according to the 2010 regulation passed or presented by the state legislature in 2009, it says it'll be strictly enforced. Well, hey, what's the matter with Saunders Point, that you can't enforce it there? I have a record of the minutes being stated that there's lots of golf carts riding around there. I don't wanna single out one community from the other, but again, I'm deadly against this golf cart issue, and to say that the Board of Governors went along with it, I don't believe is fair, and it's- don't believe is fair and it's not something that I'm aware of at all. So I hope you deny it as you did in 2010 and we have hills in Black Point just like in Giant Snack Heights, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yep.
Is, are there copies here or is this one set?
Just give them all of her.
I didn't make separate copies. It's the whole thing. I numbered them.
Just put them all on the record over there.
This is one, one set of copies, so, so what I'll do is, if you don't mind, instead of giving everybody a copy, why don't I give it to the recording secretary and then she'll make copies with the minutes and then when we get the minutes, people can review it? Or did you think we should review this tonight?
No, just give them all of them.
You have the testimony.
Thank you.
That's okay.
I highlighted most of the information that I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak under public delegation? Just hang on. Just hold on one second, please. Is there anybody else like to speak under public delegation? Hearing now, if you have a question, if you just come up to the microphone so that we...
Yeah. I didn't give my address last time either, so, the secretary, Sally Cheney, 28 Seabreeze. I wrote down a lot of things, but I'm only going to say one. Under no circumstances am I lying to you about putting a letter forward and I wanna make that very clear. The Board of Governors did not have a meeting this spring and so, and that's exactly how we explained it when I handed it over, and so they were polled by phone and every single person on the board said, "Of course I was gonna vote for that, 'cause we don't have our meeting where you would vote until May and we wanted to accomplish this before summer." So yes, it wasn't a part of a formal meeting and agenda thing, which is why Mrs. Johnson might not have heard about it, but under no circumstances did we kind of send you off a fake letter. I wanna make that part very clear. I disagree with a lot of things that she said. The person who went by her all the time was Bob, the one you've been listening to here. He was told at the police department at the time, I know that was confusion, that he could have a golf cart, so. But either way, I disagree with a lot of things said there and unsafe roads for small roads. Yeah, our roads are as wide as many roads in town. The place where you can't get by right now, sure, that's construction. You can't deal with the construction. That's not, that's not about the road. The accident was a car. You should see how fast cars go on our roads. Golf carts can't even go that fast. And lastly, children would be driving them. It's just the point. They're licensed vehicles, just like cars. Children could be driving cars and we'd arrest them if they were. The Connecticut license part, yeah, I think that was probably a screw-up when they wrote the law, but that's a state happening, not ours, so, so be it. I think that's all I'll respond to so I don't take your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Chair. Barbara?
Here we go.
Barbara Johnston, 35 Seacrest Avenue. I guess I wasn't on the call list. I didn't ever receive a call and our Board of Governors can call special meetings throughout the season or the year, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak under public delegations? Okay. Then we'll get on with our meeting. The first item will be the approval of minutes of the March 10th, 2014 meeting.
Subout.
Second. Is made in the second of their discussion.